Okay.
All right, we're. Hey Doug, we're live and ready to go.
Sure, let's call a meeting in order and get, uh, let's have a roll call.
Rob Hill, present.
Jim Miller, present.
Michael Brown, present.
Present.
Right now, Doug.
Doug Ervin, present.
Okay.
Try again, Doug.
Doug Ervin, present.
There we go.
All right.
Okay.
We can do pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Do you want to take it from here Doug, or how do you want to do this?
Um, since Jim's there in person, how about Jim run it and I'll just, uh, comment in as necessary.
Okay, do we have the approval of the minutes of October 12th? So they wouldn't have a chance to read them?
Yep, I, I, uh, purport to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
So moved, any, I guess, any, uh, any comments? Then so moved. Okay, could we get the report from the Parks Director, Michael Brown, on what, uh, what's going on?
All right, uh, I'll start with the mountain parks, uh, like we always do. Uh, the Castman Trail Center, um, the Nordic Lodge Parking Lot is still currently closed. The reason for that is we're waiting for a little bit additional snow so we can, um, have proper boundaries on that parking area. But we will get that, uh, open as soon as we get a little bit more snow. Still, no trails to ski yet. We do have power back to the stadium area. Modern Lecter was able to get us temporary power for that for this season, so, uh, all racing events and everything will have power over there. Uh, the bear trap shelters, uh, I, I have a conversation going on with the engineers as to when we should, uh, submit a bid request for construction of the east shelter, uh, with, uh, alternate bids will be included for the other two shelters, um, so that we can at least have a, you know, solid price point for those other two when we have budgeted money. We have an idea of what we need to, uh, come up with funds. The discussion there with the engineer is, do we bid it now at this point in time? Or do we wait until closer towards, uh, when the sites would be available for construction? Cause with winter being imminent, uh, construction wouldn't happen till, till next spring after the snow clears. Couple other things there, uh, that have stalled me on, on putting those out to bid is, I've had some informal discussions about possibly going with a different, uh, design, going back to the kits and, and changing the foundational requirements on that. I haven't had clear direction and I haven't had a chance to present that information to the, Board of County Commissioners as to whether we want to go back and, and pursue a, a simpler design with a kit and different foundational requirements. So, um, that's part of why I've been stalling. I just haven't had a chance to have a formal discussion on that. Uh, right now, the design that we have has been approved by the Parks Board, has been approved by the County Commissioners. But to, uh, be a little more fiscally responsible, uh, there was talk about simplifying that and going back to a kit similar to what we have at the lakes. Are there any questions on that from the, from the Parks Board?
Michael, is that, is that related to, um, some of the requirements for like, for your, your footings and whatnot? Or is that part of, part of the cost?
Yeah, a little bit. So we had geotech work done up there. They came up with a plan, uh, that we needed to subx so many feet and bring in engineered field. We have a, basically it's a, a monolithic pore with a thickened edge, but we do have additional support for the structure, uh, with these concrete pedestals. And, and we came up with basically kind of a custom structure. So, the thought behind it is, do we just simplify this to where we don't need the foundational requirements for one of these kits? All metal structure kits with a hip roof that, that would just be simply attached to the, uh, the foundation itself on the thickened slab, thickened edge versus doing additional work. And it might simplify it, or might, might reduce the cost if, if we go in that manner. I need to have conversations with the engineers to see if there's going to be an additional cost, add service to theirs to basically change their plan so that we have a, a engineered plan to submit to the building department and for contractors to bid from. Uh, as for the wayfinding signs and kiosks, I have no new updates on that. The wayfinding signs, the vehicular signs, that, uh, I'm kind of waiting to hear back as to, how the mountain road construction is going to be bid. I've heard some concerns that it may come in over, but we have not, it has not gone out to bid yet. So we don't know if that changes the scope of the project, if, when they construct that or any of that. And we don't want to install these signs while they're doing construction. So, we postponed that, um, and I'm just waiting for some updates and, and I'll, um, probably try and get it in front of the Commissioners on the work session to, uh, determine how we want to approach that project.
What about on the kiosk?
So the kiosk, uh, I have yet to work through the ad service with the consultant to get the final designs. It's, it's on my list, but it hasn't been done. So hopefully within the next month or so, I will be able to, uh, get that ad service taken care of, get it in front of the County Commissioners to approve and then get those guys going on, on full design of those kiosks. Um, the Bridle Trail Rotary Park, uh, we've closed upper gate for winter. I did get a few comments after that. We closed that, uh, concerns about parking, why we can't have the roundabout open longer. But, uh, that's really comes down to staffing. I don't have enough staffing to just, right when it gets too slick for vehicles to be down there to run down there and close it. We, we have other things going on, so November 1st, we determined that was a good date to do that. You can still access the trails, there's still some parking available. You just can't park right down by the outhouse or, or the main entrance there. Also recently, uh, I helped assist, uh, CWTA and I want to give a thanks out to them as well as, uh, Justin Kenner, which I believe he's part of that group. We're clearing the trails, there's, there's thirty, I think they took out thirty-five, forty trees that had fallen across the trail, uh, mostly on the, on the upper loop. But, uh, it, it was, it was a chore for sure to get it done, so. But it, it was done and we got it opened and, uh, presently there's quite a few people still using the trail even though they had to go over and under several trees. Our Trail Pass system is up and running, uh, so you can purchase Trail Pass online. Now, uh, you can come into the office and purchase Trail Pass. I believe, uh, Mountain Sports and Sea Lowes, uh, the Biathlon Club. There might be one more, uh, sporting goods group or store that you can purchase those at as well. Is there anything else on the mountain, any questions?
The, the fence that's opened or closed at the parking lot, uh, to the main entrance, should that be closed or open tonight?
Uh, into the Nordic Lodge Parking Lot?
Yes.
So we're keeping that closed until we get a little bit more snow, because we want to berm up, uh, basically barriers to prevent vehicles from driving into the trails and whatnot. Now that all of the trees have been downed and removed, um, we're just using it. We're waiting for the snow so that we can, can put a proper border around that parking lot to eliminate any potential traffic from, from going onto the trails that's not supposed to be there. So probably one more snowstorm and then we'll have that open.
Okay, it is open tonight. So we might need to know who's responsible for that and just to make a reminder.
Okay.
There's someone who's in there tonight doing cookies.
Okay, um, I will go close it. My staff may have left it open while they were doing operations in there. What time was that at?
Five o'clock.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, um, I'll probably go up and close the gate in the morning.
Check before you do that, I might be up there.
Okay.
Would this be a good time to bring up the, where we are on the master plan? Or should we do that at the end of the meeting?
On the summer trail master plan?
Yes.
Uh, I can, I can touch base on that real quick. It has been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, uh, so it is a working document. However, uh, there was a little bit of confusion early on about, you know, well, we can just go ahead and start doing things. That's not how master plan works, uh, the master plan is our guide. Um, it is a document for me to review when potential trail work is going to be done and make sure it follows that plan. So any, any trail work for the, that summer trail master plan, any improvements, changes, those need to be submitted to the Parks Department for review. And, uh, and then I will most likely, uh, depending on the nature of it, uh, bring it in front of this board, uh, for acceptance, uh, so that we're all in agreement that, yeah, this meets the master plan, this is what we want done and, and go forth with that. Uh, so that'll typically probably be the process. If it's minor work done, um, you know, I'll probably approve that on my own and then just update the Parks Board. But if it's a major trail expansion, a major realignment, um, requires equipment to do the work, those things I'll bring in front of the Parks Board and then the Parks Board and myself will, will determine if, if we want to approve that, that to the ma, you know, to be done under the master plan.
So if, uh, Central Wyoming Trails wanted to do some trail building up there on the, uh, master plan, that has to go through you first?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's best that way. It's been reviewed, it's been authorized, the, like I said, the master plan is a guide. It is not a document that says this is free to do it and, and get going, so. And I, I've talked with CWTA about it a little bit, um, so they, they're of the same understanding that this is the process we should probably go through.
Great.
I, I'm not trying to put in barriers or prohibit things, I just, um, we just need to have the county involved so we know what's going on versus finding brand new trails and things going on.
Great, thank you.
All right, out at Pathfinder in Alcova, um, in Alcova, uh, inspections of cabin docks. There's a hundred of them, will be done next week. Um, I'll be out there most of the week with the Bureau Rec, uh, going up and down the docks looking for safety issues. We discussed having the building department involved through the whole process, um, to alleviate some of that workload. I've talked with the building department and I will, uh, photograph and document docks of concern that we should have the building department review, whether, you know, significant structural issues or, or things of that sort. So, uh, um, they, they have enough workload, so I didn't want to overload them with a whole week of spending all day long with me out there walking through each one. So, um, I think between the Bureau Rec and myself, we can, we can probably see the major issues and, and bring them out if there's a concern, so.
When was the last time that was inspected? Do we know?
I don't know if it's been done, because, so let's see. Last year we walked through the cabin sites, uh, and, and looked at those and I believe the Bureau Rec said that it may have never been done, so.
So, Michael, is there a guiding document for like, so people know what's compliant and what isn't on, on the docks or?
So there's a document, uh, site modification, um, guideline.
Okay.
For construction of docks, for what is allowed on the docks, the size of the dock. Um, and, and that's just a, kind of a general overview document. And some of that was, um, some of these docks were grandfathered in before that, before 2016. Uh, so not really, um, if you want to do work on a dock, you want to reconstruct your dock, um, rebuild the substructure, that needs to go through the building department application. They review it and then, um, I'm flagged on it and then I review it to make sure what they want to do meets the site modification guidelines, then it's submitted to the Bureau Rec for approval. And then once they approve it, and then I sign off on the building application and then they, they issue the permit. So, some of that can take some time. The other things, if they're going to reconstruct it and do anything within the lake bed, that requires our Corps of Engineer approval, so they need to get that and that needs to be done and approved before the Bureau Rec will sign off on, on the, uh, construction application. You know, if it's, uh, simple redecking of the surface with no substructure, building departments, as far as I can tell, they're not really involved in that, so I can approve that. But any change in footprint, Bureau Rec needs it, any structural changes, building department has to see it. So, yeah, there are processes there. And if anybody has questions on that, they, feel free to call me, I'll try and walk them through it so they understand the process.
Is there a board that you go through, like a cabin board or dock board or?
So, no, the, there's a Cabin Owners Association, which, uh, sometimes I, I submit information to them to disseminate throughout their group, but they don't, uh, they don't review docks, dock placement, that, that falls on the Parks Department and the Bureau Rec for that, so.
Okay.
So we had a request for proposal advertised for engineering services for the, uh, a design of water and sewer system at the Alcova Trailer Park, which includes, um, tie-ins to the Marina, Ski Club, the Boat Club and, um, our full hookups. Uh, so we conducted those interviews Tuesday. We had, um, we had five proposals submitted. Uh, there's three of us on a group that reviewed those written proposals and scored them. And then, uh, we took the top two and conducted interviews on Tuesday. Uh, we then scored those, uh, in, uh, in-person proposals and we've selected one, uh, we opened the price proposals from the two that we interviewed. Uh, the one that was selected before a pri- price proposal, um, their price proposal was the low one and, and so it kind of fits, it's real close to what we budgeted. It's a little bit higher, but not much. And so I will be sending a, a notice of award to the Commissioners there. I notified them today, they're drafting, uh, a contract to get to legal. So, uh, we're in the process of that. This is for design only, this is for getting a set of construction drawings and an engineered estimate of what it'll cost to, uh, replace that system. That system is aged, uh, originally the RFP I wrote, we had, I wanted an assessment of the current system, but as we went through an onsite walkthrough and further discussion with my staff, uh, we determined that there's no real need for an assessment. It, it is of an age that it just needs to be replaced. And, uh, the location of the current system is underneath almost every single trailer out there, a hundred and fifty-five of them. And so it's difficult to replace it in place, so, um, we'll wait and see what the Engineers come up with for a design. But, uh, we've talked about ease of maintenance, uh, basically setting up the system where we don't have to shut off the entire water system when, when we have a leak, leak, so that we can isolate sections of it with proper valving. Um, we talked about different metering options and, and so that'll come through in the, in the design as they progress with the design for, for the system. We're, I am still in preparation of a request for proposal for, um, consultant, whether it be a civil engineer or other professional consultant to basically, uh, provide what I call an environmental assessment, but it's more of a strategic plan for the cabin areas for their wells and septics. Basically, up to this point, they've just been permitted as requested wherever and with the number of water wells out there, there's a risk that, um, the way the lots are sized, the way the ownership of the property is with Bureau Rec, um, there's a high risk that we may have to go into a UIC compliant, um, type of underground system for the water wells with the DEQ. And so before we go any further and permit anything else, uh, we put a moratorium on any permitting of septics and water wells out there, I think back in March. And so this is a process to determine what, what can strategically be done out there. You have some non-permitted, uh, septic systems that are above ground tanks. You have places where you may have a leach field, you may not. The geology of the site doesn't allow for septic systems in certain places. The setbacks when you have such small lots causes issues there. So I, I'm still working on, on preparing that document so that we can get a professional in to review that. Up until this point, I've requested any information any of the cabin owners have on their water systems or septic systems, permits, uh, non-permits, anything they can provide to give us a clue as to what they have on their site so that when we do get a professional on board, we have that information. A lot of that gathered so we can work through that process.
Should you be working with the board on that too, so they can inform the other cabinet owners?
Yeah, once, once we get to that, I haven't got to that stage yet. Uh, I've sent out individual notices to every cabin owner requesting that information. But yeah, we'll be working with the Cabin Owner Association on, on some of that as well. Any other questions on the lake? I guess the only other little project that we've been working on, um, my staff has worked at the Bishop's Point Shelter and we've insta- installed, uh, basically a, a small fine wire mesh along the rafters, uh, so that we can keep the birds out. There's been swallow nests nested in there, actually when they started putting that up, there were two owls in there. And so this will prevent the birds from roosting, which will prevent us from having to go back and clean it. When we clean the night before, uh, there'll be bird, bird droppings on the tables and everything the next morning when somebody's reserved the site. And, and we had, um, a group that had reserved it and we cleaned it the night before and it was a, it was a disaster. They ended up cleaning it and because they spent so much time and sent me photos, I ended up refunding their, their reservation because they had to spend so much time cleaning it for their event. Uh, so we're, if this works there, well, we may implement it in some of the other shelters that we have the problems. And then, uh, we're working on, uh, the Diebase Campground Improvement is great, but we need to delineate the boat parking a little bit better. So, um, we've come up with an idea, uh, with some buckrail fencing. Uh, we're not quite sure if that's the route we're going to go, but we're investigating into that to, uh, get people to park properly so that you can fit the designated number of boat trailers and trucks in there. Um, it's, it's a great design on paper, but to train people to use it properly i- is kind of what we have to delineate, so. Other than that, that's about it at the lakes. As we discussed previously, we talked about updating the parks rules. I had a meeting yesterday with, uh, three sheriff's deputies, two, actually four, to kind of discuss what they thought might need to be changed in, in their rules. I'd like to get through some of those more and get, um, drafts to the Parks Board to start that review. I know these were adopted in May of twenty-one, so we're, we're more than two years out. Couple of quick things, I'll run through my, my notes here, um. I, I wanted to maybe revise the winter months for the mountain, you know, uh, March fifteenth is, is pretty early for, for our mountain and our snow, so I'm looking at changing those dates. The sheriffs had some concerns about, I guess, a golf cart on Lake Shore Drive, which is allowed, is not defined as a vehicle, so they can't technically write a DUI for a golf cart. However, we've had a couple of accidents out there with folks that were under the influence and so we want to revise that so that even though it's not a registered vehicle, it is, uh, can still get the full extent of a DUI. The reason for the golf carts on Lake Shore Drive is there's a lot of trailers, private owners, clubs, and they, they drive back and forth to the Marina, to their docks and, and we allow that on the county road. However, um, if you require them to license and register it, the golf cart, where it becomes a vehicle, a lot of folks will probably go away from the golf cart and just use their side-by-side. Well, a golf cart's limited to a speed of like eighteen miles an hour, where a UTV can do forty. So, with a golf cart accident, you're looking at injury, not death. And, and so that's kind of where the sheriffs are coming from on, on that a little bit, so. And then we need to, we need to revise our rules because there's been quite a few, you know, we don't mind bicycles and whatnot, but, um, you've got these, uh, single wheeled motorized scooters that don't have any lights or anything on them that are zigging in and out of traffic and, and there's not really a way to cite them on those. Same with motorized scooters, uh, motorized coolers. There's these cooler carts that are like a go-kart, you set on your cooler and, and you can zip around.
And drink.
And motorized skateboards, so we need to look at that and try and maybe put some rules in that, you know, if you're, um, not being law-abiding or following traffic and, you know, you're causing a nuisance, we can, we can cite them in a proper way. So that's kind of came, came up. I was a little concerned in here, a lot of it says the board or ex-designee and the board refers, can refer to the Parks Director or law enforcement can impound any property left or get vehicles towed and as far as I was concerned. As far as I was concerned, the Parks Department doesn't have any authority for enforcement. However, these deputies tell me that the Parks Director does have authority to enforce. And so I can direct my staff to tell someone to leave a campsite if they're being unruly. We can call a tow truck for something that's been abandoned. I'm going to talk with legal on this because I want to make sure this is very clear. No, I don't think so. Doug, appreciate you coming in. This is really just the entry point into revising the rules. So I was just going over brief bullet points. I will be sending out a, a red line draft to the Parks Board to review and discuss as well. So this is really just me discussing kind of what I've come up with so far, but it'll be in a red line document for you guys to review and, and start putting in your, your input as to where we might need to do changes in the parks rules.
There isn't any voting that we need to do tonight right now, is there?
No.
Okay. You okay with that, Doug? I can barely hear you. Thank you.
Thanks. So yeah, I mean, there, some of the changes are, that I'm looking at is the reserved camping system. Currently our rules say you're allowed one camper per reserved site. And there are sites that will accommodate two, three, possibly four campers. And I would like to be able to have the authority to determine which sites those are. And then change the price point on those sites so that if you wanted to rent one that has three campers versus a $10 base pay, it would be $30 base pay. Whether you wanted to reserve it with one camper in it, or if you wanted to have three campers in it. But there are several sites around the lake that, that will accommodate this without changing, changing the size of the site. And, and I know folks want to camp with, with their friends and families. And so this is the way to do it. But the parks rules right now limit me to only allowing one camper per site. So. They would be specific sites. They would be specified in the reservation system as to which sites those are that you can have multi-units in and whatnot. So that's, that's another rule change. Currently our camping permits expire at 11:00 AM. And you're not allowed to come into the site until 3:00. That's for cleaning and maintenance. However, I'd like to extend it to where it's a 12 o'clock checkout, a more typical time that you see with motel rooms and whatnot. Because, you know, folks do like to spend their Sunday out there and, and do some of their work. And when they have to check out 11, then they, they fill up our day use parking with their campers and whatnot so that they can continue to enjoy the lake. But they're not, they can't stay in our site anymore. So that's, that's one of the ideas. And like I said, I'll have, have all this in a red line. Animals. Service animals are an issue. That's one of the things the SO brought up. They should probably require identification on animals. So when they do see a dog sitting at Little Beach and no dogs are allowed at Little Beach or Sandy Beach, that it is a registered service animal. It's not an emotional care animal that somebody just wants to take to the beach. It, it needs to be a service animal to be on those sites. I was a little confused. Our rules talk about domestic pets and livestock. Okay. The way I read this about grazing or ranging domestic animals or poultry is prohibited without prior written authorization by the Parks Department or appropriate federal land management agencies. So I was reading, reading this because it says grazing or ranging domestic animals or poultry. The SO reads this as you can't graze or range your animals there. What I was reading this is any type of grazing animal or ranging animal isn't allowed within the park. So I think we need to put something in here about horses. We do have something about not keeping your horses within campsites and picnic areas, you know, where people, people eat. But I, I think it needs to be clarified. Couple of reasons. We, I think we may still have horses on the bridle trail. And that was kind of the original intent. I know a lot of horse riders go up to Bear Trap and park and then, then ride, ride over to Money Mountain and, and other places. So I just thought that needed to be clarified. Part of this came because there was a cabin owner. They brought their horses out after working them and, and were swimming in the cove and it, it was kind of a, some of the folks got upset about it. And I don't see why that can't happen at the lakes, you know. So that's just my personal opinion, but it's something I want to, want to address. So it's very clear whether horses are allowed in the county parks or not. I, I feel like I don't see a reason why they shouldn't be. So I think those are probably the big highlight points about some things. There's another big one. Under section 17, public safety, it says unless otherwise provided on county park lands, no person shall possess or use explosives of any kind. I agree with that. The sheriff agrees with me on this one. Possess a firearm or other projectile. That's a constitutional right to possess a firearm. Now it doesn't say you can discharge a firearm, but it, it's, this is saying you cannot possess a firearm on county parks. And so I don't know if that's actually not, yeah. So, so you know, if you brandish it illegally, that's against the law. If you discharge it within our parks would be against park rules, but possessing a firearm in your vehicle or whatever, I, I feel like that needs to be allowed. So that, that's one that we're going to have to review with legal, but I don't see where we can ban somebody possessing a firearm in a county park.
When we went through those rules, Jim, you probably remember, that was specifically designed to prevent hunting in the county parks and not to, not to prevent people from promoting their second amendment rights to do things. That was not the intent of that at all.
Well, and this is under public safety. We do address hunting in specific areas.
Right. But that was, that was all part of it. So. But yeah, that, that was, that was an issue that I know we talked about a lot of that stuff. It took us a long time to get through that. And.
Yes, O was involved in it also.
Yeah. And I think, but I, I really do think that that's something that we need to back off on in today's world that we, I, from the rulings that have come out of the Supreme Court and the rulings across the nation, as far as that goes, that wouldn't hold up in any, any form or fashion legally.
Yeah. And then, you know, a couple of things with that. When we get into special regs, Sandy Beach, there's a loading unloading zone down by the head gate for the irrigation canal. And it says only county, state and federal vehicles conducting official business is exempt there. However, this summer, there was some dive training going on and they asked if they could park there because of their equipment and whatnot. And they, they said we would leave someone with the vehicle if they needed to be moved. But I, I'd like to include here where approval for this parking area may be provided by the board or the Parks Director, which is under the board for certain training activities. You know? So these folks were not directly tied with the sheriff's office in their training, but they do a lot of the rescue dives and assist and that sort of thing. So I gave them permission. I gave them written permission. So they had it with them. But I, I feel like we should be able to approve that a little bit. The slash pile area, I'd kind of like to change the season a little bit there. Cause May is usually pretty early to get in there if we haven't cleared the snow and whatnot. So I'd just kind of like to do that. The biathlon club, we have a few special rules there. I'd like to clarify because, you know, shooting is allowed there, but I'd like to clarify that, you know, under their operating agreement, a range safety officer is supposed to be there. And I'd like to clarify in the rules, the calibers that are allowed there because it's 22 caliber or less. Just clarify that a little bit so that it's, it's clear in the rules. So nobody misunderstands, oh, we have a rifle range on the mountain and it's a county park. So anybody can go shoot whatever they want. And, and we haven't had any incidents, but I just want to kind of get that clarified in there. Yeah. Room fire would, yeah.
I thought we discussed that before, didn't we, Dave?
So. You know.
Isn't it, isn't it, if I'm mistaken, that anytime there is firing on the range, there is supposed to be a safety coordinator?
There's supposed to be a range safety officer and they're supposed to have their flag up.
And they're supposed, they need to be certified, my understanding.
Yep. So. Just try and get that out there a little bit. I know people get flustered with how long these rules are, but it is really important. It's for the safety of the public and whatnot. Under trail use, this is a simple thing. You know, it says snowshoe and fat tire biking traffic is allowed on the winter multi-use trails. I'd just like to put the verbiage in here that they should try to stay on the opposite side of the trail from set ski tracks and as close to the edge as possible on all groomed trails. I'm not saying that they will do this, but it is highly, it's recommended, you know, because they can't always stay over there, but it, it does help us with our maintenance of the trails, the Nordic ski operations and whatnot. And and I want everybody to use our trails. I just want everybody to use them with the foresight that there are other types of trail activities going on and, and you can impact those if you're not paying attention. So, you know, try to try to stay in your lane as much as you can. You know, so that the enjoyment of everybody can be, be brought about. I think that's the bulk of it. You know, one of the things we have going on at the lake is launching and recovery of watercraft. From the shorelines prohibited. There's a few different sites where they choose not to use the boat ramp. They leave their boat trailers within. So and it says unless it's permitted by the board. We don't have anything permitted like that. So I want to kind of get that a little more clear. We may improve signage and possibly barrier those areas so that that doesn't continue. I think that's the bulk of it. And I will get you guys these red lines. And I know this will be a, a bit of a slow process, but I think the last time you guys went through this process had been close to a decade since they'd been updated? Maybe? You updated them in? Right. But before that, that last process, when you went through a lot of it. Yeah. So, so the reason I'm bringing this about is I, I think a two-year, two to three-year review is, is probably a good thing. And, and maybe we can shorten them up a little bit. I don't know. I mean, we're at 20 pages. But, but yeah, so that's kind of where I'm coming out with parks rules. I just think we need to go through a little update. These were adopted a month and a half after I hired on. So I wasn't really involved. And now that I'm been here a couple of years working through these, I can see some places that, that we can improve. So I, I think they're pretty good. I think what I'm looking at is, you know, updating for the times and, and getting a little clarification, you know, in there. So. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
Sure. I've been looking quite a bit on, on social media about some of the feedback on the lodge, on the mountain. And, and I, I've, I see a lot of, of negative comments from people and not being part of the process. And I, I feel like being, being involved with it, it's been open to the public, but and, and, you know, input was taken for quite a while, but then, then we hear on here that, that they don't feel part of the process or they don't like the design or this and that. But, but nobody shows up to, to talk to us about it until after. And anytime somebody approaches me with, with something, I try and bring it forward. So I, I would invite this, this group to come talk. It looks like Casper Mountain landowners. Like, I would be interested to hear before we, you know, make recommendations from some of these groups, you know, like what they have concerns with instead of after. And I think that would help all of us. So I just wanted to, to say, you know, maybe if there's some user groups out there that have desire to be heard, it, it would be nice to hear from them during this meeting, especially on the front end of things. So that, so that, you know, their, their voice is heard. So anyhow, I just wanted to, to express that, that I think the user groups need to, to be present, to be heard and, and, and the front end of things. And then second, I, I heard really good comments about the Hell's Half Acre ideas. And I was looking on, online and, and I, it seemed to me like the vast majority of people were very supportive of, of use. I know a few people cautioned about being respectful of the, the uniqueness of the land, but anyhow, just wanted to let you know some feedback I've seen on those.
Yeah. I like to respond about the Casper Mountain Trail Center a little bit. I do follow the social media. I do not respond. So kind of this last revolution of design for the lodge. When it was determined, so I'll go back to the start. From what I understand, when it was determined, architect was hired. They did a shirets the first go around. They had lots of people involved. Kind of blew up so much budget wise with what they wanted, all sorts of different amenities and, and things in there. And then I'm not sure why, but that firm was no longer designing the deal. I believe the county commissioners worked with an architect for programmatic type deals, you know, like what should the building have? What are we trying to do with it? Not design per se, but like usage wise and, and size. And so when I sent it out for, for a request for proposal for architects this last time, and we got to the design we have, we use that, that programmatic information as a stepping point. So then it was kind of determined that because of how it had blown up with so much public user input that we didn't get anywhere, we worked with a committee within the county to work on that. We did bring in some outside counsel from the public a little bit. We did post it on our website with notice to provide comments to me. I did not receive most of those. I think that was advertised in probably. I did not receive most of those. I think that was advertised in probably, probably listening, he's probably mentioned that. And the architect came up with a design, which is not what it currently is. And it was, it was value engineered back to fall within a budget that was acceptable to the county. So, you know, the original design um wasn't oriented the way it was. That came from some input from the outside to rotate it. And then with the value engineering, the fire, um, gas fireplace was removed, uh, the the fake rock for the fireplace going up, that was removed. The columns that held the extent of the roof out past just a regular eve, those were removed. That was cut back.
Was that done by the engineers or?
What's that?
Who, who, who cut those back? Engineers?
By, by the contractor, yeah, between the board, county commissioners and the contractor was under contract for it to get his price down. We've worked through that process with the architect. And, and so some of the architectural features on the outside of the building went away um as a cost-saving measure. There was a, a concrete wall that was going to be up higher. Um, that was cut back. Um, so the siding comes down straight, so there's not that differentiation between concrete and siding like it used to be right below the windows. And then I think uh we did keep, we did keep the vestibule and whatnot and um I think we kept the air conditioning, but there were some mechanical things that were cha- um, cut back on inside. And I, I have a value engineer list. I, I may have shared it with you guys in the past, but um so through the iterations and mostly with the county to get it within a, a feasible cost, things were cut back. The parking lot stayed as an expansion of that. That was a uh requirement of school district for their contribution to the project, but uh, yeah, so I, I mean, it's still a good, good design. It's a functional design. Um, I, I've seen comments that, well, it's not a lodge if it doesn't have a fireplace. Well, you know, why didn't they just keep the old wood one? Well, the forensic engineer, the dormers were separating, there was mold, the, the chinking in the wood, there was, it was coming apart and it was, wasn't gonna, wasn't worth the cost of putting back into that building um to save it. And, and so that decision was made before I got on board, but it was made to uh demolish that building. And um, you know, personally, I like that building. I think this is going to be a great building. If you look at Hogodon, their lodge is a more modern style lodge, but for, for uh cost, this is how you get the, the biggest um bang for your buck, basically. And, and so, you know, it's going to be a year-round use facility. I hope people use it for weddings and, and uh family reunions and in-service type things, you know, they can have a a company-wide retreat there, things of that sort. Um, and then it will be fully utilized for our Nordic community, you know, when we have ski races, we'll have the great room open so people can stay in, stay warm. Awards could be done inside there um and things of that sort. And we've improved the accessibility to this building so that when you're up there at night during the week skiing the lighted loop, you can still go inside and use the restroom and use the vending machines or the water fountain. Those, those would be accessible through a timed lock thing, so um we're trying to make it where the public can use it more without it being staffed. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Oh, it, it does, and I think, I, I think, you know what? My main comments, I'm looking at, you know, some of the designs that we looked at earlier and to me it looks, you know, pretty similar. So I guess, I guess my, my concern is, I, I, I mean, we have a budget, obviously, that, that, that you have to live within, but, but I guess I'd like to hear the, the user groups come talk to us before and that, because once you did this far down the line, it's, it's really hard to, to meet those needs, so. Um, I think if there's, if, if, um, I guess it's a call to hear from the public if um, as we, as we're involved with these projects to get your input in early. Um, because it's, it's really hard to retroactively address some of these things when, when it's uh, you know, been through the process and, and you've had comments and you've had time and meetings monthly to, to hear from them and, and it, that those times have passed and, and anyhow, that's, you know, my main point is, is to get some more input um on the front end of it, so. And that's not, not uh toward you, but toward the general public. If we could, could hear from them, it would be, I think, very helpful.
I, I agree.
How are we doing? Uh, Michael, do we have enough money in your budget or do we need to look at writing more grants for the master plan? Uh, including the whole master plan of the mountain, like, you know, the campgrounds, camping area, trails, basically that whole mountain master plan that the county commissioners okayed?
The answer is no, we don't have enough money. Um, my budget for the mountain uh has kind of stayed where it's at for the last, well, since I've been here. I haven't been here quite three years. We did get some money for replacement of fire rings and tables. We have those purchased. We're working on assembling those. We'll be installing those in the spring across the mountain, different places to replace the outdated, the worn-out, uh, the concrete picnic tables that have rebar sticking out of ends of them and things like that. So we do have that. Um, I have not, I have looked at what it would cost for campground improvements. I came up with some numbers uh to do some of that work. My staff came up with numbers and, and spent a lot of time basically estimating the cost. I'm not sure. I did not get additional funding for that this year. I will be asking again next year. I'm going to leave it at that for now. But, but no, I don't, I don't have enough staff um to do what we need to do for maintenance. Uh, I don't have enough money to um purchase gravel and um posting cable or buckrail fence or however we want to delineate campgrounds. You know, we don't have, the parks does not have equipment. I know my staff at the lake is like, well, we need our own grader. And it's like, well, how often are we going to use it? You know, Ron Bridge has assisted us a lot, but you know, when you're trying to plow the campgrounds for the ice fishermen with a, a one-ton pickup and you have three feet of snow, sometimes it gets a little difficult. We don't have a grader for going through our trails. Uh, we don't have a loader. Uh, you know, we do, when we can, Ron Bridge assists us and we're very thankful for that. Um, but my staff would like to have that equipment, but I also don't have places to store it inside. Uh, we have groomers that are four hundred thousand dollars apiece, you know, so asking for a, a full-size grader is, is not, I'm, I'm not asking for that yet. Um, you know, we have some equipment that we're, we need to replace. Um, skid steers need tracks. Things of that sort, so we're, we're more in a maintenance, maintaining level right now versus a improvement, expansion level. Let's, let's put it that way is, is how Parks is operating at this point. We're just trying to keep everything going.
So how do you think we ought to address uh finding more grants or money available that could help? Let's say up on the mountain on trail system, camping, the, the whole system up.
You know, I, I think on the trails, CWTA would help. Um, I did apply. I applied for the outdoor rec grant for the bear trap shelters and replacement of picnic tables and fire rings. Uh, we were turned down for that grant. I'm not sure why, but uh we didn't make it through the first round of, of grants there. I don't believe anything in the county because I believe there are one or two others that were for the county in that that didn't make it out of the first round. However, the city seemed to make it and, you know, they made it for Stuckenoff. They made it for, might have made it through for boat ramps. And I don't know if they made it through the final round or not, but uh it seemed like the county just didn't quite make it for some reason. And I don't know if that's how I wrote my grant or, or what, but I felt it was pretty clear-cut. It was outdoor recreation. It kind of fit the bill. Uh, we had some matching funds for it and so we just didn't, and so I, I haven't had the opportunity to spend enough time looking into grants. Just trying to keep the day-to-day going, so I, I just haven't had that opportunity yet.
Would the rec mill grant uh that the school district handles, should that be something we could look at?
I think we could, you know, it's just a matter of getting the, um, you know, if there's somebody that wants to review that, if you, if you're familiar with it, I'd be more than happy to have you look into it and see if that's something that would apply for that, um, for sure.
Okay, Rob and I'll do it. We'll take a look at it and see. Uh, we'll just take a look at it and see what we can come up with. And that's all I have.
Me too.
All right.
Doug said he didn't have anything.
Commissioner North have anything?
I think it's a good idea to go back and revisit our rules, stuff like that. The only concern that I've got, if we do it too often, because of the requirements that we have as far as the notifications and notice and the expense that are associated with it. That's the biggest concern I have about doing it on a, on a short-term basis. When we have areas that we definitely need to work on and get fixed, I don't have any problem with that because it's a very short process. I mean, as far as the publications and everything else, but I do believe that that's something that, you know, it doesn't matter how good you, of a product you put together, when you get done, you always see that there's items that you would like to do, have done better. And I think that's where we're at on this. There's some things that have, obviously are standing out at this point in time that we need to look at and change and, but at the time that we had put it together, that was, that was a good product, so. And I think there's going to be a lot of changes over a lot of things that we've, that we've done in the past over the next few years, but that's the only concern I have is just if we send it up too frequently, then I, I think that it is just, it can be too much for, for people. They get to the point where it's like, well, what, what are we going by now? Instead of having something they can look at it and digest. But the items that you brought up, I don't have any problem with, with changing those and those relatively minor changes as far as the overall rules go. Um, it's not rewriting the entire rules, which is basically what had happened this last time around because there were a lot of things in, in the old rules that were antiquated and just way out of date, so. I don't have any problem with, with doing that and I do think that's a good idea.
Well, Commissioner North, on one of these things, um, the reservation system, when these were adopted, the reservation system hadn't even come online, so, you know, you guys wrote, wrote rules for that that you kind of anticipated and now that we're two years into running the system and we're starting to see little things that, that can be improved so that, that, you know, the rules match that system and, and we can can improve that, but I think overall the rules are pretty good, but, you know, let's, let's do a few updates if it.
Yeah, no, I don't have any.
Start this process and maybe, maybe by next year sometime we, we can have it through to where we can, you know, start having the publications and the meetings to actually change them.
Well, I think, I think if we go through and we, we redline the areas that we have concerned over and have everybody look at it, then we can get it to the B O C C, send it out for public notification. And it's not that big of a deal. I mean, we can open up a public hearing for it and let people, and, you know, we got to announce that and everything else and give people the opportunity to come in. But I believe right now is the time to start working on that because if we can do that, then we can have this in place before the camping season kicks in next year. And um, we've got enough time if we start on it right now, but I don't think there's a whole lot of items in there. It's just some little, little things that need to be tweaked as far as what needs to be changed and, and get that process rolling, so I don't have any problem with doing that at all. I think that's a good idea and I think right now is the time of year to move forward with that.
Okay. One comment, uh, Michael, on uh the slash pile, the date of opening up is going to be requested to May. And how about the closing date? That's, which is October?
It's actually, right now it is, um, it's open May through October, weather permitting. And I'll still leave the weather permitting, but since I've been here, June first is really a more reasonable date to allow folks into the slash pile.
Yeah, I, I think, like you say, is, is depending on conditions.
Yeah.
Which you could open up if, if March is dry, no problem. If uh September is wet and you can't get in October, then
Yeah.
you could close it down.
So, um, the other, part of the other reason for changing some of that is uh is my staff managing the slash pile, you know, uh, we actually spend quite a bit of time up there managing it. More than, more than I'd like we have to, but uh when, in the earlier season, it, with the staff that I have, we just don't have enough time to manage it if it opens too early, you know, so, uh, because we're still trying to maintain equipment, put it away for the season and things from the winter, but uh, but yeah, that's, that's just some I'd like to discuss, you know, I'm open to ideas there. That kind of came about from discussions with my staff a little bit, so.
Okay, any other comments? And there's no public here, they may have public comments, so do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And so forth, adjourned.